I'll try this. Welcome to today's zoning board of appeals meeting, Town of Chatham. Gentlemen, thank you. I will read the following. This meeting is being recorded and it will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please let us know. This meeting of the ZBA is being conducted remotely in accordance with Section 20 of Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Then you have to punch in the ID number, which is 614-420-139, and then hit the pound sign. Or you can join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with a town policy, the public can speak to any issue/hearing or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. To authorize this firm form of hybrid meeting, I will have a roll call of all the board members. Please give your full name. We'll start with Buck.
James M. Upson, I approve.
Bill?
William Grau, I approve.
Megan?
Megan Story, approved.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
David R. Thompson approves.
Randy J. Partas, approve.
David H. Veach, I approve.
Okay. I should ask that any non-board members participating in the call via the phone, give us, please, your last name and the last four digits of the phone number for ID purposes. The meeting will be conducted as follows. The hearing notice will be read by Sarah B. Clark. She's the PPO for the town. That's the Principal Permitting Officer. Following that, the representative or the individuals might or might not present the appeal or application. Then we would ask for anybody in favor to speak. This could either be through Microsoft Teams or here in person. Then I would read any and all correspondence that we had received. Following that, we would ask for anybody who wishes to speak either against the appeal or has a specific question to do so, again via the Microsoft Teams or in person. Then there could possibly be a little bit of rebuttal. Members would then ask their questions to anyone present who had participated in the previous discussions. When that was done, we would close the hearing, go into deliberation. Board votes on appeals. The comment with Massachusetts have to be a supermajority since there are five votes. That would mean you need to get four to be successful. Voting today, we have Buck, Paul, myself, Dave T., and Dave V. With that, Sarah, we need to approve the minutes of last of the last meeting. Paul, was there any corrections or additions or anything?
I'll actually abstain because I haven't seen the minutes.
Okay.
I'll actually abstain because I haven't seen the minutes.
Okay. Would you like to repeat that?
Yeah, I just did. I will abstain because I haven't seen the minutes.
Okay, good.
I would move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that.
Okay, then we need to vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
So Paul, you wish not to vote?
I'll abstain, yes.
Right? I vote yes.
Dave T. votes yes.
And I vote yes, Dave.
Okay, very good. First application today is 21-086. Sarah, please.
Application number 21-082, 136 Bucks Creek Realty Trust care of William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owners of property located at 136 Bucks Creek Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Accessories Map, 8B Block 57, Lot S51. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that is located partially within the Coastal Conservancy District, floodplain elevation 11. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, in that the new deck will be located within the Coastal Conservancy District, and the new dwelling will be located five feet from the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,028 square feet, 15.5%, and the proposed building coverage is 2,800 square feet, 21.4% where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, in that it contains 13,054 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 27,444 square feet of land area in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Before you start, Mr. Riley, this gentleman, our lady in the back, I can't quite see, in the back row, you do not have on a mask. If you wish to stay in this room, you need to put one on.
Okay, I'll put it on. I've got all my shots.
Well, we have too, Buck. Okay, if you put that on, that would be great.
Thank you very much. Mr. Radick?
Thank you very much. So I represent Howard Meshnick and Leslie Roth. And if you've been to the site, you know that the home that they purchased a couple of years ago was pretty tired and certainly not keeping with current living status here in the town. So they retained the services of Karen Kempton to design them a new home. Karen is available on remotely, and so I would ask her to address the design work she went through with Mr. Meshnick and Ms. Roth.
Okay, Karen? I believe she is.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sarah, can you pull up the colored version of the site plan? The site plan that had the red and the blue on it?
It's up.
Okay. I guess I'm looking at a different screen. Good afternoon. I'm Karen Kempton, architect for Howard and Leslie Meshnick. We started the design process of this site almost a year ago in January. The existing house is a ranch built in 1972 with a drive-under garage on the north side of the property. If you're looking at the site plan, the colored site plan, the existing house is shown in red. The new proposed house is shown in blue, and where they overlap is shown in purple, and that includes the new deck as well. A portion of the existing house in red is over Contour 11, and is therefore in the floodplain. The existing house does not meet today's floodplain standards for construction, so the decision was made to construct a new house and deck further east and out of the floodplain. By relocating the house, we faced the dilemma of working around setbacks to the newly-installed septic system that was installed prior to the sale of the house. You can see it on this plan lightly dashed in under the proposed garage. So it's, yeah, it's at the end of the driveway. Underneath the garage is where the existing septic system is. So the Meshnicks made the decision to install a new septic system at the southeast corner of the property, allowing us to utilize more of the central area of the property for new home construction. As we could not recreate the drive-under garage without the driveway passing through the floodplain contour, we added a garage at the first floor level away from the views of the beach and the promontory point of the property. So a majority of the building coverage increases due to the addition of the two-car garage and kayak storage shed, about 700 square feet. However, we do conform to the allowed coverage of 2,800 square feet. We canted the house to the east for better views to the water across the street and away from the neighbors on Bucks Creek Road. And if we can go to the elevations, the main portion of the house is a 34-by-28 cape, and there are additive pieces to the north and an L-shaped garage to the east with stepped-down ridge heights. There are front and rear shed dormers, bookended by A-frame doghouse dormers to break up the linear roof line. The ridge height is 24 feet 6 inches above the top of foundation and below the allowed ridge height. Because we are adding a second floor, the ridge is higher than the existing ranch. But as you will see from the letters of support from the neighbors, they think it is an attractive addition to the neighborhood, and we hope that you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the, if you've driven through the neighborhood, it's pretty obvious that even though the ridge height is about 10 feet taller than the existing ridge, it doesn't have a negative impact on anybody's views and vistas. The, as you're standing in the road looking up at the building site with the water to your back, the homes on the right-hand side are quite large and quite high. The building behind the house and off to the left has a view across the empty portion of the lot, and the houses directly behind the house don't have a view today. So we're not affecting anybody's views and vistas. But I thought Karen's design really deserves the tip of the hat because she, if you look at the properties on the right-hand side, looking up from the water, they're very massive structures, the way they're constructed. And I think Karen's done a great job reducing the mass of the structure while providing, you know, adequate living quarters. So I'll do a quick run-through on the criteria. So adequacy of the size of the site in terms of size of the proposed use. The applicant believes that the size of the site is adequate because the lot has a total area of 27,444 square feet, and the proposed dwelling has a building coverage of 2,800 square feet. In other words, just a touch over 10%. When measured against the buildable upland, we do exceed the 15% allowed at 21.7%. But I think that in overall, the structure fits on the property nicely. We do meet all other dimensional requirements except the setback from the floodplain. The existing building is in the floodplain, as Karen mentioned, and the proposed building is outside the floodplain. Compatibility, the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The neighborhood is a mix of dwellings. The property at 117 Bucks Creek has 836 square feet of conditioned area, as opposed to our 3,600 square feet. But the, most of the properties are around 2,500 square feet. They're a bunch right around 2,000 square feet. So in terms of living area, we are a little larger than the, some of the neighboring properties. But again, I think Karen's design, which breaks up the size of the building, really reduces the impact, you know, reduces the mass of the building and reduces the impact, visual impact. Extender of proposed increase in non-conforming nature. Other than increasing the living area, we don't believe there is any increase in the non-conforming nature. In fact, we've reduced nonconformities by making sure the building meets all the setbacks except the floodplain, but we do move the building out of the floodplain. So we think that makes the building less non-conforming than the existing structure. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties around the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. This property has been reviewed by the Conservation Commission, and they approved an order of conditions at their meeting yesterday. I think the fact that there is no vegetated wetland on the property probably had some effect on that. Also, the fact that the applicants are, have hired Blue Flag Design, and they're going to do 6,000 square feet of invasive management and native planting restoration, the bulk of which will be in the lower section following the curve of the road. The, I think that probably had something to do with their decision. So I think that it's a net positive from an environmental point of view. Impact of scale, sighting, and mass on the neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. Of course, one of the safest ways to measure this matter is to see what the neighbors think. And the, we have a series of letters from the closest of budding neighbors that are supporting the project. The, I don't know if you had a chance to drive around the neighborhood and look at the views of the existing homes. As I indicated earlier, it's my opinion that even though the ridge is going to be 10 feet higher, that we're not negatively impacting anybody's views or vistas. The compatibility of proposed use with neighboring uses, you know, it's a single-family residence in a single-family neighborhood, so we are compatible. We are constructing a brand-new septic system, even though the septic system that was installed is only two years old. And there'd be no impact on traffic flow and safety, and that would be our presentation.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application, either here or if you're out in Microsoft Teams? Please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can pick you up and recognize you and introduce you into the meeting.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of this application.
Then I'll read the correspondence. First of all, it's a memo. This is from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the town. She writes on 11-2, "I have reviewed the plan to demo and rebuild the dwelling. The proposed plan does not appear to add sewage flow to the property. However, detailed floor plans of the existing dwelling are required for review prior to approval. In addition, the septic system must be relocated to meet offsets from the proposed dwelling." And then we have a note. This is from Nicole Smith, the conservation agent, and she wrote that 136 Bucks Creek has been approved by the Conservation Commission. And on the December 1st agenda, and I'll get to that, they were going to receive the order of conditions, and that's exactly what happened. She wrote on December 2nd to say, "They," they, this and one other, "were approved to have orders issued." Then on October 28th, Corinne, Ray, and Brad Steiner of 135 Bucks Creek Road write, "We've been owners of 135 since 2011. We have reviewed the building plans for Howard and Leslie's new home. We feel that the plans are appropriate for the site slash location and think that the proposed work will enhance current status of the resident and the plot. We encourage the board to act favorably on their appeal. Thank you for your consideration." Then on October 18th, Todd Gleason, 104 Bucks Creek Road, writes, "I have been the owner of 104 since July of 2018, and I'm writing to the board to offer my support regarding 136. As a resident near Howard and Leslie's home, I have reviewed the plans. I feel that the proposed construction will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration of my letter." Then on October 12th, Sue Austin and Julie Johnstone, 123 Bucks Creek Road, wrote, "We've been the owner of 123 since 2015, and writing to the board to offer our support for Howard and Leslie's special permit request. As residents across the street from Howard and Leslie's home, we have reviewed the plans and feel that the proposed construction will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration." Then on October 5th, Corinne and Heinrich Christensen, 141 Bucks Creek Road, write, "We're the new owners of 141, but have owned property in Chatham for about 12 years. We're writing to the board to offer our support regarding the new home at 136. As residents across the street from Howard and Leslie, we have reviewed the plans and feel that the proposed construction will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration of our letter." And then on October 8th, Julia and Peter Johansson write, "We have been the owners of 92 Indian Trail since 2005, and are writing to offer our support. As a resident across the street, we have reviewed the plans. I feel that the proposed construction will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration." And that is the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to either ask a specific question or wishes to speak against this application? If so, please indicate on the screen now so that Sarah can recognize you.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay. And questions from the board start with Dave Veach.
I'm just, I'm just curious, Bill. In the process, in detaching the deck from the house to favor the building with respect to floodplain regulations, what did they, what did they gain by that? The ability to use the basement as a basement?
That's correct. What happens is, if any part of the structure is in the floodplain, then the entire structure is in the floodplain. So even though the building's actually located outside the floodplain, above the floodplain contour, the, if the deck goes over the floodplain contour, elevation 11, and is attached to the house, then the entire structure would be in. Candidly, they're considering making a very minor change to that portion of the deck. If you put up the If you put up the colored plan, Sarah, please. You see the, see the little blue square?
Yeah.
With that, right there. I think a very, very minor change to that portion of the deck will take the building out of the, from the building commissioner's point of view, will take the building out of the floodplain, and will allow the deck to be attached to the house. And that's, that's the current plan.
Okay, great. So they get to use the basement as a basement and don't have to construct the compliant foundation?
Right.
Okay, just curious.
Randy?
No questions.
Dave T.
Dave T. has no questions.
Bill, let me just ask you a question that's sort of a general question. I'm trying to educate myself a little bit more. The zoning ordinance is key to buildable upland in terms of coverage.
Right.
Why, why is it key to buildable upland as opposed to the overall size of the lot and so forth?
Okay, well, the, harkening back to the days of yore, there was a committed group of individuals involved primarily in the Conservation Commission that were very concerned about construction adjacent to wetlands. And so, you know, they got the town meeting to modify the zoning bylaw to say that it was a function of buildable upland without really measuring the consequences of what that meant. So the, and so if, for instance, we've been before you with properties that actually have a wetland on the property, you know, and it's, whether it's in the floodplain or just a wetland, vegetated wetland, I think there's no, I think it's a good measure using buildable upland for building coverage. But then you have a situation like this where there is no vegetated wetland on the property, but we are in the floodplain. And the, so I think it's, you know, the fail, you know, there was no consideration given to situations like this. And I think we're all familiar with the difficulty in amending the zoning bylaw, particularly if it seems like, oh, they just want to build in a wetland, which is not the case. But the, that's how, that's how it happened. I mean, the, the former resident, now gone to her eternal reward, Alice Hiscock, was a major part of this modification of the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. It's a part of my continuing education on the ZBA, I guess. Thank you. No other questions.
Megan.
I have no questions.
Bill.
Yeah, one question, it's a point of clarification. I just wanted to maybe ask the engineer if he's available.
He's not, but...
On the, on the site plan, it has a, it says, is an arrow pointing to the new septic system. And it says, "Five feet over dig, see note number two." But I don't see a note number two.
Well, that would be on the, on the plan, the actual plan of the septic system, which probably is another sheet.
Oh.
And the reason they do an over dig is that the material where they're doing the work is not suitable. There's probably clay or fines in the sand that make it so that it doesn't, it doesn't leach particularly well.
Well, that, yeah, that much I figured. I just didn't know if there was something else that pertained to that septic system beyond the over dig requirement due to the soil types.
Right, so the way the system works is they go out and they dig a test hole, and they go, they, they use a backhoe and they go down 10 or 12 feet. They have a, they knew, they know from experience where the groundwater is, because the bottom of the system has to be five feet above the groundwater. So as they're doing that digging, you know, the engineer's able to assess the appropriateness of the material. In fact, it's his job to assess appropriateness of the material for leaching the effluent out of the, from the septic system. So if the material was not suitable at the bottom of the system, then they couldn't put a system there. But as long as they get into, you know, clean sand, which of course we have in abundance here in Chatham, then if they just have, if part of the upper material that's going to surround the actual leach portion of the system is not suitable, they just, they just call for the over dig.
I mean, I completely understand how all that works. I just didn't know if the note had something else to do with something other than the need to over dig the system. That's all. Because it says, "See note number two." I don't see the note.
Well, and I apologize for that. I don't have the septic design portion of this plan. It would be a, it would be a separate sheet that they're going to submit to the Board of Health.
Mr. Chairman, David Clark is on the call if you need any further information.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Dave?
Sure. Yep. Not to reiterate what Bill said, but he was quite accurate in his description. But we typically prepare three plans on an application like this, one for conservation, one for zoning board, and one for the Board of Health, because there's so much overlapping, well, so much information that each board requires that you couldn't see the forest, the trees if we got all the information on one plan. So that is a note from the septic plan that inadvertently got left on for the zoning board's plan. So it has everything to do with the septic installation and not for the project in general.
Okay, thanks.
Paul.
I don't have anything else.
Buck?
I have no questions.
Okay. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach.
Excuse me, I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach, seconds.
All right, we need a vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave?
Dave Thompson votes yes.
Davey?
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes.
Randy?
So I think your presentation was great, and so is the architect. And I'd be on board if I was voting for all the reasons that you've already gone into detail about.
Okay, but you know, they're going to yell at you because they can't hear you.
Oh, okay. So I especially liked the presentation from the architect. I like the fact that it's out of the flood zone, as it may, and it's not like a giant McMansion. The neighbors are happy, and you're getting some height without any complaints, so really a bonus. And I'd vote for it if I were voting.
Dave?
Me?
Too many Daves. I also think it's a very good plan, as always. Karen Kempner always does a beautiful job. The neighbors are happy. You like happy neighbors. It's going to fit in that area. It's not too big. There are larger homes in the area. I definitely support this. Judging from what's there, this is long overdue.
Paul?
Well, I, when I first looked at these plans and looked at the site, it seemed to me that there's going to be a considerable change in the neighborhood from what is there now. And very prominent for the association land there across the way. And I looked at the west elevation and thought, wow, that is a large facility. But I've also heard from the neighbors at 141 and 135 and 123, and from Indian Trail at 92, all of whom are supporting this, which is a significant factor from my viewpoint. And I hear nobody who is opposed to it. So I had some hesitation looking at the size of that from the water side. I think, I think it's something that I could support.
Megan?
I'm right on board with Paul. I was hesitant. It's large, but given the neighborhood support, I would support it as well.
Bill?
Yeah, I would support it also. I, I do appreciate the mitigation plan, the planting plan that they've done. I hope the plans, I hope the trees that they're planting don't ultimately block their view in that front yard, since they're putting that massive deck on the front. But regardless, I think that this is a, you know, especially with the support of the neighbors, is a valid project, and I would support it if I were voting as well.
Buck?
Well, it meets the criteria. Conservation's happy, and the neighbors all wrote a very nice letter with a similar wording. Somebody was very successful in coaching.
We were just helping.
And that's what a good attorney does, and I'm respecting that. And it's definitely not more detrimental. From the water, it's going to look extremely large, but the coverage is 2,800, and it's not 30 feet high, it's 24. And great project.
Davey?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with pretty much what has previously been said. Although I do think, Buck, I, while I was looking at the notes, I think it's only about three or four inches below the maximum height that's allowed in, you know, but, but again, it is, definitely presents a large facade, if you will, to the west. And, but I think this is a neighborhood that is, has, has been in transition for a while and will be probably for a while. There's a lot of different kinds of things in there, and, and the neighborhood has spoken in favor of this. In that particular location, it really doesn't block anyone else's views, and it does, it meets all of our criteria, and I will support it. I'm thinking that recently, we had something over across the creek on Ridgeville Road South, and it's been a while since I've been over there. And I, you know, I got over there and I looked on the other side of the creek and just kind of all along there, and, and, you know, there's a number of houses that are front of the creek there, and I don't think this is going to stand out in any way, shape, or form. I think it'll fit right in, so.
Paul, outside of our usual conditions, do you think that this being very visible, very busy, that we need to be a little more restrictive?
With all due respect, there's a large area between the road and the...
Do you mind if I ask Paul a question? Thank you. Paul?
Well, there's, there seems to be plenty of room on the site to keep things located on the site. It seems to me that our normal conditions should handle it, given that the activity down there is primarily the summertime activity. So I think if we're restricting activity between June 30th and Labor Day, we probably are as well as we need to go. But I would move to approve the application as submitted with the conditions that all construction activity be contained onsite and construction vehicles be contained onsite or offsite with the permission of the property owner. And between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
If I could address that, please. The, I think that an appropriate condition, given the nature of the neighborhood, would be that work be allowed to continue, but there be no work on weekends, no work before 8:00 in the morning or after 5:00 in the evening. The, I mean, it's, I think it imposes a real burden to prevent construction during, you know, basically one quarter of the year. And the, and it's certainly appropriate in some areas, like the Horn Cottages area, for instance. Some of the small cottages areas down in South Chatham, certainly appropriate. This is a situation where you have full-size roads, you know, no dirt roads, no narrow areas, plenty of room on the property for construction vehicles. I think it would be appropriate, in this instance, not to have the complete prohibition of outside construction in the summertime.
So as I understand it, you're agreeable to all of the conditions with the exception of no exterior construction between June 30th and Labor Day?
That's correct.
I'm still a little reluctant not to put that restriction on there, given that, as I, as I understand it, we're dealing with association land right across the street, and that that is used in common by a number of people who are in the neighborhood on a regular basis?
Well, I'm sure that it is, but again, I, you know, I just remind you that every neighbor we've heard from supports the project. And the, as long as, you know, the, the construction crews are courteous and keep their vehicles off the street, I mean, most of the people either work for a living or are familiar with, you know, the travails of earning a living. And, and so keeping a construction crew from employment and being paid during the cost of the summertime, I think they could all understand, you know, they're entitled to some, to the courtesy of no work on weekends, and no work early in the morning, and no work in the late afternoon. But, you know, at 5:00, they can sit on their deck and have their cocktail, and there won't be any noise. So I really think it'd be appropriate, in this instance, where there's so much room on the lot, and where the roads are paved and wide enough, and we do have support of all the neighbors, that, you know, outside work would be allowed during that limited period of time, Monday to Friday, after 8:00, and ending by 5:00.
Well, okay. And I think frankly, you're being very generous with the neighbor's support of automatically saying, well, that's okay if there's a lot of this and that. So I think I'm going to ask the board members if they agree with Paul, or Bill, or something else. Buck?
Maybe under normal economic times, we would be hurting the contract, the construction worker's paycheck. Right now, if I was to take a guess, there's plenty of work on the street. I don't think, I appreciate the comment, and I think under normal conditions, that might give some weight to it. But we're not in normal conditions. There's plenty of work out there, and I, I support Paul's position of the people in the park and down on the water. I like, I like it. No construction between June 30th and Labor Day.
Bill?
Yeah, I also agree with what Buck said and with Paul's point of view completely. I think, you know, to, to rely on those letters, to say that people are, you know, in support of the project, great. Are they in support of the project being under construction all summer? Maybe not. And, you know, so I would go along with what Paul is proposing here.
Megan?
I do disagree with the jump from the letters of support to the support in the summer. However, before you laugh at me, Mr. Riley, I agree with you. So perhaps that laugh was premature. I think that, yes, there is quite a bit of business in the construction industry right now, and in that vein, they are scrambling to get things done. And I think to have a town in which you can't construct in the summer anywhere is a little bit crazy. I mean, we have 12 months' worth of construction that needs to be done, and people want to get their houses ready as quickly as possible, and I think they'll do anything and everything they can to get it, as much of it buttoned up by the summer. But in this particular instance, in this neighborhood, I would allow the construction in the summer. instance, in this neighborhood, I would allow the construction in the summer.
Davey.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with Mr. Riley. I think that they should be allowed to have construction during the summer outside, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 to 5:00.
Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm sure you told your clients, Mr. Riley, that you'd ask and all we could say is no, and that's a great idea. However, I don't think you made a compelling argument about why this particular house should be able to build in the summer, because a lot of people want to. And I think it's, I know we don't set a precedent when we do property to property, because there are indeed differences in all the properties, but this is kind of a general rule, and it's only two months. It's not a quarter of the year. So I would agree with Paul.
It's June, July, and August.
June 30th.
Oh, June 30th, all right.
Dave each.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Karen Kimpton has her hand up. I don't know if
I'm just going to finish the board if you don't mind.
I don't mind.
All right. Dave each.
I'm, I don't know that I agree with Mr. Riley, but I'm with Megan and Dave on this one. And I guess you could say I do agree with Mr. Riley in this particular case. I think it's always a balancing act in applying these restrictions. And I think that it is important, because I've seen some instances of summer construction going on until 7:00 at night, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that the no weekends and the restricting times during day is very important. I think with that in mind, and all the different pressures and things, and this, my sense of this is that I think it could work, what he's proposing could work fine there. However, I'm happy to go along with what the majority of the board.
Well, the, you know, as you know, any vote is a supermajority. So if we're going to follow Paul's suggestion, that would take four votes, and I don't see there's four votes. I see, because I agree with him, I see one, two, three, no, no. So.
Well, I'm not saying I would vote, but this is a question, so I'm not, I'm saying I would, I think that what Attorney Riley has presented is, I would consider reasonable in this instance. I'm not going to, but I wouldn't vote against what Paul is proposing.
Okay.
So, no, I would, I think, I didn't say that well. I was trying to say I'm not going to vote counter to.
Okay, okay. So that
Sure. If that's the case, I'll go along with Dave Veach, because I don't want to vote against the whole project. But I want to go on record as saying, I don't agree with this. If this was not before us, they would be allowed to work all summer. We're penalizing them because they came before us. I don't think that's fair.
Well, and incidentally, all we'd be voting on is the conditions. It has nothing to do with the end result, meaning give them permission to build the house.
Well, okay.
Just so you understand.
Yeah, I do understand, but I also know that we're putting something down here that they have to follow, and I don't think it's right.
Karen Kimpton had raised her hand. Sarah brought it to my attention.
Karen?
I just wanted to add that the closest to Butter, who is on the east side of the property, and you can see the footprint on the site plan, is the Meshnicks home as well. So they are the closest to Butter to this property as far as noise is concerned.
Thank you.
Well, I just, well
Why does it not?
I guess I don't understand the two Dave's position here. They agree with my position, but they don't want to vote against what?
They have expressed sympathy for your opinion, Mr. Riley, but they have indicated that on a vote on the conditions, they will support Paul.
Is it simply a vote on the conditions?
Yeah.
Or is the whole thing buckled together?
No.
Okay.
We separated them out.
Okay, so they can vote if they were, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I asked if it were, pardon, this is learning, you know, experience for me. So that is separate. They can vote yes on the project and no on the conditions, I suppose would be the, okay.
So if we decide to have a vote?
Okay, thank you, just to clarify for me. Thanks.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, is it possible to have the vote be, that the work be allowed with, in the summertime with the restrictions? Have that be the motion?
No, I don't think so, because I asked Paul specifically what he thought about the conditions, and he gave me an answer and suggested the following. So therefore, I will have Paul make a recommendation on the conditions, then I would see if there's a second, and then I would call for a vote on the conditions. Then we go on to the project with the conditions. If they pass, if they don't, they don't. So Paul?
Well, I think I actually did make a motion to approve the application as submitted, but I'll repeat, subject to the following conditions. That all construction activity be contained onsite and construction vehicles to be contained onsite or offsite with the permission of the property owner. Between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
There's no points of order
Yes, there is.
Here, no.
You said that the vote is going to, the vote is going to be on
Mr. Riley.
What conditions to impose.
I'm going to have a vote. Do you understand me?
No. The condition is what conditions to impose, then there's going to be a vote on the project as a whole. That's what you said.
That's right.
So a vote on the conditions first.
That's right. That's what I said.
Okay.
What didn't you understand?
Mr. Simple just made the complete motion to approve the project as presented.
Right.
With that condition.
That's right. But I said we're going to vote on the conditions first.
Okay.
Is there a second?
But no, you're asking for a second to the motion that's on
All right, that's it.
Entire project.
No more.
I will second the motion.
Okay. We'll take a vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Davey?
On those conditions, I can't, on those conditions, I can't vote yes.
Okay. Davey?
I will vote yes on the conditions.
And I vote yes. Okay. So now we have a vote, Paul, on the entire project.
I'll move to approve the application as submitted on those conditions.
Dave Veach seconds.
Okay, we need a vote. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
I'll vote yes, because I want to see this project go on.
Dave Veach votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's unanimous. That's a 5-0 vote. Thank you.
I've never seen it, anyway.
Okay, Sarah, while we're signing this, we go on to application 21-089, please.
Application number 21-089, Timothy C. Emerson Revocable Trust, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 305 Main Street and 15 School Street. Also showed on the town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16C, Block 60, Lot 33. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change non-conforming dwellings on a non-conforming lot. The existing dwelling at 305 Main Street is non-conforming, and that is located 20.8 feet from Main Street, 12.4 feet from the Westerly of Butter, and 7 feet from the Coastal Conservancy District floodplain elevation 11. The proposed addition to the dwelling at 305 Main Street will be non-conforming, and that they will be located 17.7 feet from the road where a 25-foot setback is required. An installation of a new foundation will increase the building height within the required 15-foot of Butter setback. The existing dwelling at 15 School Street is pre-existing non-conforming as to road and of Butter setbacks and will remain unchanged. The existing unnumbered dwelling to be demolished is non-conforming, and that it is located 12.7 feet from the Sutherly of Butter and within the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed reconstructed dwelling will be non-conforming, and that it will be located partially within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. Also proposed is the construction of a new driveway as allowed by special permit under Section 4A, 3D of the bylaw. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D, 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing the Emerson family. Participating today remotely, sorry. Try that again. Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing the Emerson family. Participating today remotely are Peter Emerson and Susan Gordon. Their brother, Tim Emerson, owned the property dating back to 1981. Tim unfortunately passed a few years back, so Susan and Peter, along with Tim's children, have been working on some proposed development projects that we have before you today for the property. Also available remotely is Dave Clark, who is the engineer for the project. And in the audience with me is Steve Hart, who did the design for the project. From driving by the property and probably from being in Chatham for many years, you recognize this is a pretty unique property located on the corner of Main Street and School Street. It consists of three existing dwellings. It also is interesting in the fact that it slopes down so significantly from Main Street and School Street down toward the marsh in the back. The largest and most prominent structure I would say in the property is that which fronts on Main Street. That has a street address of 305 Main Street. And the front part of that section, of that building is the original home on the property, dates back to 1800s. Along with that building, there is the one-bedroom structure at 15 School Street, which fronts right up on the street, where Sarah has the cursor right now. And then behind that is a unnumbered two-bedroom structure, doesn't have a separate street address with the town, and that one is tucked in the back, as you can see behind 15 School Street. As is fairly common with older homes and older lots, there are a number of nonconformities as to setbacks for each of the three structures on the property. The property, the overall building coverage is also non-conforming as it's at just over 17%, where the maximum is 15% in this R20 zoning district. The project consists of some work to the 305 Main Street building and to the unnumbered structure behind 15 School Street, but none of the, no part of the application today involves any work to 15 School Street. So we're just dealing with those two structures. In terms of 305 Main Street, the applicants propose some renovation work, including the addition of a new farmer's porch on the front of the structure and new dormers on the front and west side of the home. Additionally, the applicants propose placing the front section of the 305 Main Street building on a new foundation. That will result in increasing the height by just over half a foot. Due to the construction of the farmer's porch, the setback to Main Street will be 17.7 feet, whereas currently 20.8 feet. All the setbacks will remain at their current dimensions. With regard to the unnumbered rear structure, the proposal is to tear down the existing two-bedroom dwelling, which is in pretty rough condition at this point, and build a new one-bedroom structure in a location that's essentially located between 305 Main Street and the 15 School Street building. The proposed new structure will be located 25 and 1/2 feet from School Street, and therefore it will meet the street setback. The new structure will also be, will also be significantly smaller than the existing unnumbered structure at the back. The existing structure is 995 square feet, and the proposed one-bedroom is only 540 square feet. So it's a small structure that we propose to build in this location. It's also not overly tall. It's about 16 feet in height, and due to the fact that it's tucked into the hillside there, only about 5 feet of the structure is actually located above the grade at School Street. Finally, the overall building coverage for the property is being reduced, so that will be under the 15% that's allowed in this zoning district. The last part of the project requiring zoning relief is the creation of a new driveway for the property, a portion of which is located within the Conservancy District, which required us to go to the planning board for comment and then approval from you today. In reality, it's really formalizing the existing driveway that's already on the property. If you've been out there, it sort of meanders down the hill, and then there's a parking area in between the two buildings. And then it's just going to be changing the type of material from dry, excuse me, from dirt into stone material. In terms of zoning relief, we are seeking a special permit under Section VB of your bylaw for the further encroachments towards Main Street, for the 305 Main Building, and for the increased height of this building within the setbacks. Additionally, special permit approval is required for the proposed new structure that you see there, the one-bedroom in the middle. While it does meet the street setback, it is still partially located within the floodplain or Conservancy District. Unfortunately, sort of a rock in the hard place. If we took it entirely out of the floodplain, we could no longer meet the setback to School Street. So we tucked it as tight as we can, but there is a portion that'll still be on the floodplain, although it's less than what is for the current structure. Finally, as I mentioned, a special permit is required under your bylaw for the proposed driveway. Moving along to the criteria, adequacy of the size of the site, including not limited to maximum lot or building coverage or setbacks. We believe the size of the site is adequate for the proposal. While the existing structure at 305 Main Street is already located within the setbacks to the west of Butter and Main Street, the proposed changes, I would suggest, are minor in scale. The placement on the house, of the house and a foundation would only result in an increased footprint of less than a foot, and the only increase in the footprint itself is the addition of the new farmer's porch, which we think is a nice addition to the design of the property and in keeping with its historic nature. With respect to the proposed cottage, it will now meet all of Butter setbacks, and as a result of the smaller size of the proposed cottage, the overall building coverage will decrease at the property. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, it's a bit unique, as we have three dwellings on this property, but the overall size of these structures are not overwhelming for the property and comparable in size to neighboring properties. Extent to proposed increase in nonconforming nature of the structure or use. Only increase in nonconformity is the setback to Main Street, which will be at 17.7 feet as opposed to the existing 20.8 feet. And again, that's a result of the farmer's porch that's proposed on the front. The proposed cottage will actually be more conforming than the existing structure as it meets a Butter and street setbacks. Suitability of the site, we believe the site is suitable for the project. It has been approved by the Conservation Commission, and order of conditions was issued at yesterday's meeting, and we believe the construction work can be completed without any negative impact on neighboring properties. Impact of scale, sighting, and mass and neighborhood visual character, we don't think there'll be any negative impact on neighborhood visual character. Steve's proposed design changes to the 305 Main Building are consistent with the current architectural style, and the increased height is not significant. It's not going up by a lot, and the existing building already sits a little bit below street grade. And a majority of the proposed cottage that I mentioned will be located below street level, and if you were out there, you saw the large hedge and other vegetation around the street. So it's probably not going to be visible a majority of the year. Anyway. Compatibility of proposed use, residential use in a residential neighborhood, and therefore we're compatible. The property will have adequate sewage disposal, town water, and appropriate drainage. No negative impact on traffic flow and safety. No issues with noise and litter. Property will have all necessary utilities. It is not a formula business establishment, and while a portion of the proposed cottage dwelling is in the floodplain, it's smaller than what currently exists, so we think that represents an improvement. So that would be our presentation. David or Steve are available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can recognize you.
Mr. Miller would like to speak to this application.
This is Fred Miller. I live at 285 Main Street. I'm in Butter, on the other side of school. I really appreciate the changes that have been made. If, in fact, the proposed new cottage is not going up more than 5 feet above the street level, that would just be wonderful. I appreciate that. I continue to support the addition of the drive, the parking place on School Street. It's actually hazardous the way it's put together right now, and I really appreciate the Emerson's listening to all the comments and getting adjustments and find it very, very helpful and appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this application?
There's no one else that wishes to speak in favor.
We have a note, this is from Judith Giorgio, our health agent. She writes on 1/21/2020. "I have reviewed the plan to renovate and build a new cottage at this property. The additions renovations as proposed do not appear to increase the septic flow at the property. However, floor plans of the existing dwellings will be needed to review to confirm this." "The new cottage appears to encroach on the existing leaching area. Plans are required to relocate the leaching area as proposed." Then we have a note, this is from Catherine Halpern, planning board chair here in the town of Chatham. On November 23rd, she writes, "The planning board at their November 22nd meeting reviewed the ZBA's request for comment. After review of this request, the board voted to send a positive recommendation to the ZBA with the comment that the driveway shall be constructed of a permeable material and shall be constructed in a manner which permits the unobstructed flow of water." If you have any questions, let us know. And then we have, this is Michelle Clark. She writes on November 24th. "The applicant was before the Historical Commission on March 2nd, 2021, proposing to replace all of the windows and doors, the addition of a front porch, the addition of two dormers on the front and west elevations of the structure, and the addition of a door and window on the east elevation of the main structure at 305 Main. After reviewing the materials provided by the applicant, the commission members determined that the structure at 305 Main is historically significant, and in addition reaffirmed that it is also a contributing structure in the Old Village National Registered District. The commission did not impose a demolition delay on the work as proposed, nor did they determine that the work constituted a substantial alteration. Therefore, no referral was made to the Cape Cod Commission." If you need any information, additional information, let us know. And then we have a note, this is from Nicole Smith, and this has to do with the conservation. First of all, she tells us that it's on the December 1st agenda, and then she writes, "The public hearing for the ZBA meeting being held on December 2nd, should you have any comments regarding the application?" And that's the same one I read earlier where they confirmed that they were in favor of this and writing the order of conditions. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either against this application? Has a specific question? If so, please indicate on the screen now so that Sarah can recognize you.
There is no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, questions from the board. Dave T.
Thank you. I have no questions of Mr. Norcross.
Paul.
I have no questions.
Megan.
No questions.
Bill.
I noticed in the comment from the Health Department, it was dated 2020. Has there been any additional feedback from the Health Department on this?
That was the new letter written by Judy that we received yesterday, I believe, so it may have been the date that was incorrect.
Okay. Well, that's good. Along those lines, the leaching field under the driveway, I assume that that is not an engineering issue or an issue with the Health Department since they didn't raise a concern about it.
I'll let, Dave, if you're available, to weigh in on that for us, please.
For the record, David Clark here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Leach fields are allowed under driveways under Title V. We did check the previous design for that septic system, and those structures are rated for vehicle traffic. So simply what we're doing is moving a row of leaching structures on the east side over to the west side so that we can maintain the proper setback to the new cottage. That application has not been filed with the Board of Health, but we will do that shortly. Happy to answer any other questions.
So Title V does allow that?
Yes, it does.
It does. And did you explore any other options to not put it under the driveway? I'm just thinking, in case something happens, it's, you know, you'd be tearing it up.
We would basically have to replace the entire system. So rather than doing that, we felt it was better to move it over. There are really no issues with putting it under the driveway, especially because it's going to be a pervious driveway. Like I said, the structures are rated for vehicle traffic. We will have to put a vent in so that the leach field is properly vented, but other than that, there are no engineering concerns.
Okay, that's all I had.
Buck.
Buck has no questions.
Dave V.
Dave Vich has no questions.
Randy.
I just have one question. That tiny house, don't get me wrong, I think it's going to look great compared to the, essentially, a shack that's there now, but what are they going to do with that? Is somebody going to live there year-round, or is it going to be a rental, or EMBV? Are we allowed to ask that? If so...
We can ask. To be honest with you, they're not really sure of the plans yet. The family's still kind of deciding, are they going to sell? Are they going to try to keep one of the structures and sell the rest? It's kind of open-ended right now, but I think the intent would be to build it for somebody to live there.
Okay, Paul.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Vich seconds.
That takes a vote. Buck.
Buck votes yes.
Paul.
Paul votes yes.
Dave T.
Dave T, yes.
Dave V.
Dave Vich votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, Paul.
Before I make this motion, let me just ask you, what, what are your plans in terms of construction?
I don't know if we go down that rabbit hole right now, but I think, I think clearly we can keep the vehicles on site without an issue. If you felt inclined to do the July and August, I don't think that's a big problem given the site in terms of the restriction.
All right. I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
Well, we're...
Whoa, we're still at deliberations?
Deliberations.
All right. Well, my, my view is that you've responded well to, I think we last had you in here, or this property in here in January of 2020, and at that time...
Yeah.
There were a number of comments, and with respect to the 305 Main Street, we dealt with 15 School Street at the same time, but you've responded to those comments, and it seems to me your design is, is improved, and therefore I intend to support because I think it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Megan.
I wholeheartedly agree. I think the project is great. I wasn't here in January of 2020, but I would definitely support this project.
Bill.
And I would as well. I think it's a major improvement, and it will be a benefit to the town.
Buck.
I'm going to support it. Conservation liked it. Mr. Miller liked it, and I've heard from a few others that they have, that were opposed to the first application are now in favor of this one, so I will support it.
Dave V.
Meets all of our criteria and not substantially more detrimental, and it is an improvement, so I'll support it, yeah.
Randy.
I'd say you've had a lot of hoops to jump through, and I think it's an amazing project in a very important spot on, on Main Street, and I wish them well.
Dave T.
I think it's a great project, Jamie, and I will, excuse me, Mr. Norcross, I will definitely support it. Thank you.
Paul, conditions?
Well, it sounded to me as if what it said wasn't our standard conditions.
Whoop, the... I'm sorry. It sounded to me as if our standard conditions would be acceptable to the applicant, so I'll move to approve the application as submitted, on the condition that all construction activity and vehicles be contained on-site or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner, that between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity would be between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
Dave Vich seconds.
Need a vote? Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Dave T.
Dave T votes yes.
Dave V.
Dave Vich votes yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much.
Unanimous vote.
Application number 21-090, Kenneth L. and Tamara A. Basel, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners are property located at 146 Shore Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16D Block 16, Lot 41. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming dwelling on a nonconforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is nonconforming, and that it is located 13 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required, .3 feet over the property line for the northerly of Butter, and 11.9 feet from the southerly of Butter where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed porch and balcony addition will conform to road and a butter setback requirements. The existing building coverage is 3,059 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 3,280 square feet, where 2,850 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and that it contains 21,841 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Ken and Tamara Basel. I know that the Basels are in the electronic audience, and with them is their architect, Gregory Chup. This house, I'm sure you're all familiar with, this is the Joseph C. Lincoln House on Shore Road, although it's been the Basel House for the last 32 or 33 years. The Basels, as is obvious by the appearance of the property, have been extraordinarily good stewards of a truly historic property. Interestingly, the, the Historical Commission, when it analyzes things, there are three criteria to be deemed historic. That it's of a distinctive architectural style, which this house is, that it has a, an association with a person, place, or thing important to Chatham's history, which this house does. It is a, a absolutely charming house of the classic shingle style, and Ken and Tamara would like to make a change, but it's in the rear, which will not be seen from Shore Road. They want to construct a 17-by-13-foot porch on the rear with a small balcony above. There are, as shown there on sheet A3, that will be the view from, well, from Portugal, looking, looking westward toward the, the back of the house. It is a small change. Gregory provided, and he's willing to speak, but he provided a summary that the project will provide outdoor living areas, especially a much-needed covered porch. It's 221 square foot, feet. It will be a, in the rear of the house, accessible from the dining room, the balcony above accessible from one of the bedrooms upstairs. The porch structure includes Doric columns and an entablature of similar design found in two other locations of the house. The new balcony rail will match the existing master bedroom balcony, and it is, I think, a very simple project, so I'll go into the criteria, and obviously Gregory will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But as to adequacy of site, notwithstanding the lot size and the other nonconformities, the site was adequate, certainly is adequate for the house built 106 years ago and expanded thereafter. The site will remain adequate for the porch and second-story balcony at the rear if you approve it. While coverage increases by 221 square feet, it can't be seen. It's without impact, of course, on setbacks, gross floor area, or living area. As to compatibility of size, in the third page of the sheet, you have the, the comparison which I provide. The lots vary considerably in size. This house is sighted close to the road and then looked, thus looks somewhat larger than it actually it is, but it's certainly in keeping with the size and of other houses in the neighborhood, and is smaller than several, several. If you approve the special permit, there will be no change because the house itself is unchanged. This is only a coverage issue rather than a gross floor area issue. As to the extent of increase in nonconformity, the coverage increases by 221 square feet, but as I've said, it's at the rear, and the only abutters who can see it in the rear at 154 and 162 Shore Road have written a letter in support of the proposal. As to suitability of site, it's been suitable for residential use for over a century. There are no environmental issues, and there are none from the construction of this porch. As to scale, sighting, views, views and vistas, it is, again, a truly charming home, an award-winning from the Historical Commission, classic shingle-style home, and what Gregory has designed is, I think you can find tasteful and appropriate. It's consistent with the existing style and the historic changes to the structure. It's been reviewed and approved by the Chatham Historical Commission. Throughout impact on mass views or vistas, the other criteria are not at issue. The chair will read a letter from the Board of Health indicating there are no encroachments on the septic system, and obviously, there's no impact there. So the question is whether the construction of a porch on the rear with a balcony above, which we think is completely in keeping with the classic style of the home, but nonetheless increases coverage, is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The 221-square-foot lot is relatively small, completely without impact on streetscape. The owners have a very, very long history of dedication to the preservation of prostures in the Lincoln home, and the addition of this porch, thoughtfully designed to match what is there, is in keeping with that record. So in light of the criteria and the plans, I think you can find that this proposed rather modest change is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Gregory and I, for that matter, the Basels, would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate on the screen so that Sarah can recognize you.
Mr. Emerson has his hand raised, but I'm not certain if it's for this application because he was the last applicant.
Uh-huh. Mr. Emerson?
There is no one that wishes to speak in favor.
It would look that way. All right, I'll read the correspondence first. There's a memo from Judith Giorgio, the health agent. She writes on 12/1/2021. "I have reviewed the plan to add a covered porch. The porch will not add sewage floor to the property and will not encroach on the existing septic leaching area. I have no concerns." Then we have a note, this is from Michelle Clark. She writes on November 24, 2021. "The applicant was before the Historical Commission on November 2, 2021, proposing to construct an open porch at the rear of the structure. The Historical Commission members determined that the structure at 146 Shore Road is historically significant, but did not impose a demolition delay on the proposed work." And that's it. And then we have a note, this is from Thomas Jennings. He writes on November 22. "We own 154 Shore Road and 162 Shore Road, both of which abut the Basels' home at 146. It is our opinion that the proposed renovations would enhance the home and the neighborhood. We fully support their proposal. We have offered contractor access and overflow parking via our driveway to minimize any disruptions or traffic at the street." And that was from Michelle and Tom Jennings. That's the end of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience, on Microsoft Teams, that wishes to either speak against this application, has a specific question? If so, please indicate on the screen now so that Sarah can recognize you.
There is no one in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, so questions from the board. Megan.
I have no questions.
Bill.
The northerly property line, where the, clearly the house goes over it, when did that, like you said, they bought the house in 81, was that in place then?
The, the garage was constructed prior to the Basels having purchased it. It encroaches on the panhandle going down... It encroaches on the panhandle going down to Tom and Michelle's property. It's been there for 40 years, and the folks in the neighborhood have a very good relationship, as you could tell by the Jennings letter.
Right. Yeah, I was just curious. Unusual, but that's all I had.
Buck.
One question, Bill. On your comparison sheet, sheet three in your handout, where you have the footprint for the existing home as a 3059, did you calculate that?
I took it from the engineer's site plan.
Oh, okay. Beautiful. Thank you.
Dave V.
I have no questions.
Randy.
No questions.
Dave T.
Dave T has no questions.
Paul.
Well, I haven't received any correspondence from Portugal, although I assume it's probably on its way. My, and I think the project obviously is a very good one, but my question is, there is a vine on the garage and part of the house which has beautiful berries on it. Do you have any idea what that vine is?
Mrs. Basel is in the audience, and if she can share her horticultural or natural skills, that would be welcome.
Sure.
Buck might also.
I guess she's not speaking. I think it's commonly referred to pyracantha, fire bush, and it's very thorny, and it is absolutely a spectacular plant in December, and you like to cut it and prune it for bringing berries in the house.
Yeah, okay. I think those are the only questions I had.
Okay.
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Vich seconds.
We need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave T.
Dave T, yes.
Dave V.
Dave Vich votes yes.
I vote yes. Deliberations? Bill.
Not, certainly not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and I would support this in full.
Buck.
It's absolutely splendid design by the architect, and it keeps the uniformity of the architecture, meets our criteria. It's definitely not detrimental to the neighborhood. Probably can't even see it from the street, and I will support it.
I agree.
Agree?
I agree.
I agree also.
It's one of my favorite houses in town, and this is an amazing project, so I love it.
Conditions?
Well, what's the concept in terms of building here, Bill?
The, I'm sure the Basels would like to get it done before they come up in the spring. I don't, they do have a builder lined up, but under the circumstances, the Jennings family owns what some of us think is the Weller property, which is a very large field adjacent, and given their willingness to allow parking, I don't think a seasonal construction ban is necessary here. There's plenty of room. It also, and again, if Mr., oh, Mrs. Basel is here. I assume you would like to get it done ASAP. Has the engineer, has the construction folks, or has Gregory given us a how-long-it-will-take-to-build answer?
Gregory can speak to that if he'd like to, but we would like to get started as soon as possible, and the contractor will be available. I would also like to thank Mr. Upson or whomever mentioned the pyracantha because that's what it is.
Thank you. Well, I think under those conditions, I would just move for approval of the application as submitted.
Dave Vich seconds.
Okay. We need a vote on that. Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave T.
Dave T, yes.
Me?
Dave Vich votes yes.
And me, I vote yes, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Let me just sign this. We do have one other piece of business today, and for the new members, at this time of the year, the chairman appoints a nomination committee because at our last meeting in the year, we vote on chair, vice chair, and clerk. And it's one of those things where it's limited to the regular members, both voting and being able to be anything, so. The votes used to be supermajority, as we do everything else, with the exception, 40Bs, 40Bs are not supermajority. Sure, we have one of those, and one of these days we will. We had a situation a number of years ago where the chairman appointed himself, I think, as the nomination committee, and nominated somebody, and was seconded, and there was a person on the board who objected to that and nominated somebody else. So when the vote was taken, it was 3-2. Well, that meant we weren't going to have a chair. We weren't going to have a vice chair. We weren't going to have a clerk. So one of the individuals involved changed their vote, and so we were able to go forward. But we then took it upon ourselves to change it, so now it's a simple majority. I mean, hey, you know. So Sarah wouldn't remember the years. I remember the combatants, but I'm not too sure about the years. So with that, I'm happy to appoint Mr. Vich and Mr. Thompson as our nomination committee. And it's just like that. So it looks like everybody approves of that, not that they're going to vote. Right?
Oh, it's whatever you want, sir.
Yep, thanks. Well, not really. By the way, okay, so is there anything else?
Oh, I have a piece of, like, I will not be here at the 16th meeting.
Okay.
I don't know if I need to be on mic, but I will not be here at the 16th meeting. Just...
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else? Okay, Paul, a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll move to adjourn.
Dave Vich seconds.
Okay. Everybody's voting.
Buck votes yes.
Bill?
Bill votes yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Paul?
All votes yes.
Dave T votes yes.
Dave T. Dave V.
And Dave Vich votes yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you all very much. What time is it, Sarah?
It is 5:32 PM.
5:32, we are adjourned.